Good evening. I would like to call to order the Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission meeting for April 1st, 2021. And if everyone would stand up, Mike's going to lead us in prayer and Andrew will have a pledge tonight.
Bless your prayers. Dear from the Father Lord, we just thank you for this day you've given us. Father God, just continue to watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us in all we do and things alike. Father God, just lead and direct this committee, make the choices and decisions of the city, what best suits the city. Father God, just continue to watch over our first responders, police, fire, ambulance people. Father God, just continue to watch over them and keep them safe. Father, just thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon us each day. Father God, we love you and we thank you in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me with a plea of allegiance. A plea of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Andrew. Before we kind of get going, I want to welcome aboard Amy Wise. Amy and her family have long served Smyrna and Rutherford County, and you're a welcome addition, and we appreciate your willingness to serve with us.
Thank you.
All right. On to citizens' comments.
None at this time.
Approval of the minutes of the March 4th, 2021 meeting. Counselor of the meeting minutes in order?
In order as to form, Chairman.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions or discussion about the meetings? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Old business. Kevin, it looks like our maybe first and only under item here is the rezoning request. Janet Ibrahim, 2090 Rocky Fork Road, rezoning R4 to PRD.
That's correct. This is the request, just for everyone's reminder, this is at 2090 Rocky Fork Road. It's 1.98 acres. Currently is zoned to R4, and it's requested to be zoned to PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and C2, and the land use plan would support a mix of office, retail, multifamily in this area. This proposed PRD is for 10 single-family attached units to be built, is really five duplex-type units. We had a few comments. This one was deferred last month. There were some concerns regarding the fire truck and access through that, and so there have been, there were some changes made to that, but we still have a few comments. The first comment would be, starting with number four, showed dimensions of the driveways for lots 1 and 10. There was some concern that there is not adequate room for parking within the driveway and the emergency vehicle turnaround to not be blocked, and so that was our concern. So we'd ask for dimensions on that. And we did ask for just the internal setback details. They did show the setbacks for the surrounding portion of the development, for the exterior property lines, but not the internals. We'd ask them to provide the required minimum square footages of open space and improved open space per Section 4.070(c) of the current zoning ordinance. Number seven was regarding stormwater requirements. We had some concern about the amount of fill in the northeastern corner. In addition, there are concerns about there is a potential stream bed in that area, which would need to be investigated further. That is something that, if this is rezoned, it would be really looked at in more detail at the site plan and grading permit reviews time, but didn't want to bring it to their attention. It is something we had a concern about. Ask them to label the fire hydrant locations, add a sidewalk along Rocky Fork Road, and show a type-C buffer between the units and Rocky Fork Road. Show the landscaping areas to meet design review. And then the elevations, part of the elevation show on all siding-type product, but there are showing as well on a different page, at least 20% of the building to be brick. And so we just asked them to make that consistent between those two pages. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions, or if you have any questions with me, feel free to do my best to answer them as well.
Kevin, in reference to comment four, can you provide me with a little more detail about what has changed from this versus the last time we looked at it?
Yeah. I've kind of blow it up a little bit bigger on the screen there. The area on the far left side of the property, as you're looking at it from the road, they have added a turnaround area here, and the turnaround area does meet what the fire code requires as far as size. The concern was this, really this driveway primarily, and the, is there room to park vehicles in this driveway that aren't going to be sticking out into this area, and then they have no way to turn around? That was, that was the primary concern. The driveway directly across at Unit 10 as well is certainly part of it, but Unit 1 is probably the most concerning. And so that's why I was asking them to show the dimensions of the driveways for those two lots.
Would we require 35-foot setback to the garage in this type of development?
That's, on a single-family development, we do. On this type of development, we typically want to have double width, and not room to park, so you can park two. We typically look at 20, roughly 19 to 20 feet is usually what the setback would be. This is a situation also, this is a private road, so the 20 feet is often measured from the right-of-way line. There's no right-of-way here, so really we'd be looking at, you just have the pavement of the private road and not an actual property line to measure it from. And then we asked for the staff, or the, not staff parking, guest parking, and they have some space, some spaces shown as you come into the site on the left-hand side. They do have some kind of a one, or half per unit guest parking, half space per unit as you come into the site. In addition to the parking in the driveway, some of them have more room than others, some of these units, but the ones on the end where the turnaround is was where we had concerns about.
So is your concern such that staff isn't comfortable with approval at this point? Or where are we at with this?
Yeah, I think we want to see a little bit more information.
What specifically?
Primarily, well, just our comments.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think there was a little bit of a mix-up at him and the engineer getting our comments because the email address that they had on their plans is not their current email address, and so I think they actually didn't get the comments till yesterday, so they didn't have, I don't know that they had adequate time to address them, because some of these were new based on the revisions that we received last week, so that's where there was maybe a mix-up there too as well, or there was a mix-up just because we had, we didn't have the correct email address to send the comments to. In the past, we had sent them to the applicant, which was the developer, Ms. Ibrahim, but the engineer did not receive, our last set, he didn't receive them, and so we sent them, we tried to send them to him directly, to him, but we had the wrong address, so.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Kevin, the type-C buffer, that's like the third of the four. Is it the type-D that has a berm?
Yes.
Okay, so this would not have a berm, correct?
It would not be a berm. It would just be, and that's really something that kind of comes with our, the Enning Springs overlay, because this does follow, actually, in the Enning Springs overlay, is that buffering between residential units and the roadway.
Is there any kind of buffering on here that would actually buffer the KOA camp ground as well?
Yes, yes, that side would also be buffered, the same type, a type-C buffer.
And what about item number seven with the environmental concerns, I guess?
Yeah, and that's something, again, we, I mean, they're going to have to meet those requirements regardless, but we did have a concern just because in that northeastern corner, there's a pretty significant amount of fill to be placed, and there is, appears to be some sort of stream bed, and I don't know if it's a blue line stream or anything like that, and just, and it was our concern in that area having that amount of fill. Again, that's something that typically is looked at in a lot more detail with the site plan, but it is something we had a concern about, and we wanted to bring it to their attention as well, so.
Do we know the siding type? Is that a cement fiber siding?
Yes, yes.
The percentages on that was 20% brick rest siding?
Yes.
Is that equal to what's across the street in the homes across the street from them?
There's a lot of vinyl across the street.
The townhomes are a lot of vinyl. The actual single-family area, if you get down to Tetter Boulevard in that area, I would have to look. To be honest with you, those have been there a long time. There's probably a lot of brick and vinyl, probably is.
Mixed.
Mixed. There's probably not any cement.
Brick fronts, three-sided vinyl, that kind of thing.
I just know that with the PRD, we've required brick and hardy or cement fiber.
Right, and they do have that.
Yeah.
They do have that.
Yes, sir, we'll recognize you.
Jared Gray, Civil Design Consultants.
And if you'd give us your name and address as well.
He just did.
Did you say Gray?
Jared Gray.
Jared, okay, I'm sorry.
Civil Design Consultants, 8170 Coley Davis Road in Nashville, Tennessee. Correct, we didn't receive the comments until we got a separate email that said, "Where are your revised plans?", or we would have addressed all of them before tonight. What I can tell you is that we do have 19 feet in front of building number one, which was the concern relative to parking. You can also see the minimum building setback line, that there is some room to move that back and actually get more footage if we need to for that. We can't actually align it with the adjoining building there. From a standpoint of the truck turnaround, I think that we've crossed that bridge with respect to the buffer. What we are showing on our landscape architecture plan between KOA and us would be now extended along Rocky Fork Road. Have no problems with the comments whatsoever in regards to the concern over fill. Obviously, that's something that we are cognizant of, that we did check to see if it was a jurisdictional blue line or whether it was a wet weather conveyance. At this point, it appears that it is a wet weather conveyance based upon the quad maps, but we will go to TDEC and request them to classify that particular conveyance. They are the entity that have the jurisdictional authority to actually classify, and we have no problem with that whatsoever, but we can do that at site plan stage. With respect to the other comments, you know, again, have no problem with addressing them Obviously, asked for approval to move forward with the rezoning, knowing that you'll have an opportunity at site plan to come back and look at any of these other issues. Also, regarding the internal, this is a horizontal property regime. Regarding the internal lot lines, all the buildings are separated by 15-foot or greater, so we do have separation there.
So you mentioned on building one, you see where you would have 19 feet.
We currently have, as shown, 19 feet.
Okay, and you can drop that back?
We can, we can actually increase it. We can increase it.
What about building number 10?
Building number 10, currently we have 36, so you actually have two parking spaces deep, you know, worth, and then much more on the other units.
I guess the question, I guess, would be if you have occupants in building number one that are parking there without giving enough clearance, how would we correct that? How would we say we had an emergency there and cars are blocking it?
Well, at 19 feet, you do have a full space outside of the garage if we go.
One?
I'm sorry?
One full space.
You have, well, it's a double.
Side by side.
Side by side. But if we pull it back, then you're getting closer to that number two space. And again, our analysis and what we run.
Back and approach.
Sure.
This is an auto turn exhibit. You can see that there is, the way that we brought the truck in, you know, obviously they could drive on the wrong side, if you will, of the road to make the wider turn if there's a problem with the vehicle sticking out a little bit. And this is how they would exit. We did one for entering and one for exiting. So you can see. Just so I've got this straight in my head, at 19 feet, you're going to have two vehicles side by side, but you're not going to have someone parked behind it because, I mean, they'd be in the middle of the road, right?
Correct, correct. A standard parking space in most municipalities, and it does vary somewhat, is nine-foot by 18 feet.
Yeah, Smyrna is actually nine by 19, but if they had 19, they would be meeting that, but I think moving the building closer to Rocky Fork Road would give me a little bit more comfort level, so we have a little bit extra in there.
Do we know how much footage that is if you backed it up towards the setback?
If we back it up toward the setback, I want to say that we are looking at another eight feet.
That's what we're looking at.
And so.
I figured eight to 10 feet.
You know, probably not enough to get a full car width, but it would, it would make it better, and we could definitely do that. It's not a problem.
Chief or Brian, have y'all looked at this from staff perspective?
Yes, we have.
Cat, would you speak to that for us, please?
Yes, sir. Scott Byers, Smyrna Fire Department. I just bought if the commission would like a copy of the minimum dimensions for the hammerhead turn radius that would be required, and to me, it would be most simple for the developer or the architect to simply see, will these dimensions fit in that turnaround? If you all would like a copy, I have several here.
I'm trusting your word on it as much as anything.
The way it's designed here, I think it's going to be very close, but as I say, if you'd like a copy of it, I know you've shown your diagram driving, but these are the radiuses that we require for our apparatus to make it into that specific hammerhead.
And in that, those, you'll see that it is 22-foot in width in lieu of 20. Their sheet shows 20, or 22, and I believe we are 123 or 124, and it's labeled actually on those drawings. You can see what we've got it called for there, so.
We definitely agree those are fine, but it's the radius that actually encroaches on the driveways that's important on the diagram because where it is is measured.
There's cars in those driveways.
Yes, sir, this is just to show where that minimum radius must be to allow for the apparatus to turn and how far it will encroach on that driveway will be based on those measurements.
And how do you see a remedy for that? I think that's the main question.
Addressed me?
Yes, please.
In regards, we are holding their radiuses as well. That's the reason why that is shaved off on the end there, so, again, it fits. If you were to take this and put it right into ours, you'll see that it does, it does fit with a little bit of extra room there for conservancy, if you will, and this is a conservative hammerhead turnaround as well. So what we run there and what you're looking at is actually an auto-turn mathematical run program that we put all the information for their specific truck, and then we run it into the site, and that program in and of itself is also very conservative in its modeling. So we did not, you know, make any modifications or anything to change it. It comes out, as you can see, if you look at their schematic here, you can see the radiuses are dead on what we're showing as well.
But you're talking about a difference of 20 and 22 feet, the width.
Well, what I've done is I've increased it to 22. 22 is better than 20. The more room we can give the truck.
Captain Myers, will you, can you explain the difference for us here as to why what he's saying it'll work and you're saying there's still some questions?
All that's based on, sir, is, he is correct, if there are no vehicles whatsoever.
So that's the main thing is like.
That's the assumption that there's no vehicles.
Building one specifically, right? And if we back building one up, then what?
I believe that that would definitely decrease the likelihood of a vehicle being parked there to block it, yes, sir, and as long as they understand that that hammerhead also requires that it is lined and marked, fire lane only, no parking signs on each side, and, you know, that it's.
Chief, are you good with that as well?
Yes.
Okay, so, sounds like we made a little headway here, I don't know, but we just want to make sure we're not blocking emergency traffic.
Understood, we wouldn't want that either.
Right.
Absolutely.
Captain, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Chief, you good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, I don't know if this is the time to ask this question, but.
Go ahead and ask.
In looking at this, where it is drawn on the map, and looking at the major thoroughfare map, there are proposed roads that are connecting this old, what did I say, this old Rocky Fork Road to the new Enen Springs Road. Where in conjunction with this are those roads planned? Because the dotted lines seem to, on that, seem to be a little, may be a little in conflict with this, and it may be just the way I was looking at it today.
Kevin?
Yeah, I don't have a thoroughfare plan with me, I should have. This one, it doesn't affect this track, I believe it's the next track over. There is a road that would connect, kind of hold this Rocky Fork to Enen Springs. There is something there.
Because I was looking at particularly Hunters and Fairfield, that it would have to, I'm assuming would connect with one of those routes through that.
One of those, right. This one, I believe it's Tetter Boulevard is where it dead ends, is right across from Tetter Boulevard, so.
So you're saying the impact would be on the C2 parcel?
Or to the, actually be more to the, a little bit to the west, the next parcel to the west, actually.
Good question.
First ones.
Yeah? Okay. Other questions?
Thank you for providing these exhibits. It's very helpful to see, and it does appear that if we move especially 1, 2, 3, 4 closer to.
Moving toward the road.
Toward the road.
Just 1 and 2 or 3 and 4 as well?
Yeah, well, I figured 3 and 4.
1 and 2 for certain.
Yeah. I figured 3 and 4 just to make it consistent, but if we get 1 and 2 moved closer to the road, then it looks like, it looks like it would be no problem.
Kevin, are you good with this?
I think as long as, I mean, I think the comments we have that we would still like to see the drafts, and I think as long as our department is comfortable with what they're proposing, yes, I would be good with it.
To include the moving of 1 and 2?
Moving the units closer to Rocky Fork Road, units 1 and 2 for certain, 3 and 4 would be fine as well if they want to, I think 1 and 2 are the ones we're primarily concerned about.
And do we have a specific minimum distance to move it forward?
I would probably say move, move the rear of the building as close as they can get to that center.
That's what I'm thinking.
We can do that.
It just, again, it's hard to tell from, from the layout, but it looks like that's not going to give you enough room to have a second car in line.
It will not.
However, it gives you a lot more clearance with the two cars side by side. It gives you a lot more clearance pulling in and out.
Agreed.
From the hammerhead, so I think that still makes it a better condition, right?
I agree.
And if it's striped, I think Captain was talking about it, if it's fire lane striped and so forth, but could they be ticketed if they're in that fire lane striping?
Yes, sir, it is TCA violation parking.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Just like lawnmower or anything else.
What is the wishes of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with staff comments to include changing the location of building 1 and 2 and final fire department approval.
So we have a motion to approve with staff comments to include additionally moving building 1, 2 forward and to obtain final fire department approval with the move. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Kevin, we, new business now?
Anexation in planning service, town of Smyrna between Seven Oaks Boulevard and Enen Springs Road West, right-of-way annexation.
This is an annexation that is, all we are looking at annexing is a portion of the existing right-of-way. It's actually, the right-of-way is actually the Interstate 24 right-of-way, but the portion that we're concerned about is the frontage road that was built when the interstate was built, a portion of which is in the town limits, but this portion is not, and it would basically would connect from the end of Seven Oaks Boulevard to where the road curves and comes out at Enen Springs Road. And the reasoning for this is this would allow for the town to take some ownership of this road as far as maintenance, as well as, you know, helping keep it cleaned up. It is an area that we see a lot of littering and dumping, and this would allow for town forces to enforce that, as well as, again, do any maintenance, you know, fixing potholes, that sort of thing. And so basically, so we just annex that portion of the right-of-way, with the frontage road basically over towards the interstate fence, interstate right-of-way fence. This is, is an annexation, it would obviously be something that the town would have, we do have a plan of services in your package as well, this is very standard plan of services. We would be providing all services here, but it really just, that's all we're looking at doing is just annexing that piece of the right-of-way.
So how does this add value to our citizens?
It would add value in that we would have, be able to do some enforcement in that area. Those, the neighborhood hood of the Seven Oaks, those folks have actually done a lot to try and take ownership and do what they can, but cleaning up that area on their own, but this would allow for the town to be able to write tickets if we see things and all that, as well as, again, just do some, some road maintenance as needed.
Does this in any way, would this make us anticipate more traffic in any manner?
No.
Not necessarily?
No, it would, it would not anticipate any additional traffic, I wouldn't think. No, it would, it would not anticipate any additional traffic, I wouldn't think. It was what's already there.
It's pretty heavily used right now.
It's quite a bit, it's used quite a bit already, certainly. That neighborhood especially uses it as a way to get back to Enon Springs. But I wouldn't anticipate it would increase the traffic in that area.
Definitely helps the quality of the road.
Yeah.
It will. And I'll tell you that from the council, I know I haven't, I'm pretty sure Mark has, gotten emails or phone calls about, you know, what can we do to clean it up and enforce. We get those, as well as you'll see a lot from social media where you'll see neighborhood groups out trying to do it and requesting help. And to answer your question again, which I think was a great question, this gives us the ability to do that, including enforcement.
Okay.
And Kevin, does this also benefit us as we move forward and hopefully creating a exchange at that point?
Yes, certainly. I mean, absolutely. If interchange happens, we will be annexing this area anyway. At some point, this road, if interchange happens, the road's probably going to be moved anyway. But at this time, in the foreseeable future, it's going to obviously remain in this location, certainly.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Most to approve staff comments?
Have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is a rezoning request. Amir Roseon, 770 Nissan Drive, rezoning C2 to C5.
This is a rezoning request. It's on Nissan, 770 Nissan Drive. The property also has road frontage on Bracken Court. The request is to be rezoned from C2 to C5. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 as well as the PN02 on the back corner, southern, southwestern corner. And the future land use plan would support commercial development in this area. Of course, the C5 district is, the district was created three years ago now, over three years ago. And is the district that allows for automobile sales and automobile service type uses, which C2 does not any longer. And so, that is obviously the reason for this request. We have had some calls, primarily today, of concerns about it. And not all, not all are concerned about it. We had some with concerns and some who were just wondering what was going on since we put the sign up and everything last week and sent letters. So, but that is, that's what we have at this time.
Kevin, do we know what the proposed use is?
It was for an automobile sales lot.
Automobile sales?
Yes.
Looking at the map, I'm seeing a lot of C2 that includes restaurant, retail, banking, office, grocery. Do we have anything else in this area that, where we have car sales?
We don't have any car sales in that area. I don't think we've got the nearest, probably we do have some auto services as you go south of Enon Springs Road across from the Nissan plant. We've got a couple automobile service businesses.
Were those brought in as a C5 or a PUD?
C2?
One of them was a PUD. One of them, I think, may have been built before the orders changed.
Yeah.
One of them was. And one of them was done as a, as a PUD.
It's showing a building on there now. Is that the old bank?
It is.
Okay. I'm sort of like Chairman here. The surrounding properties, it just doesn't seem to mesh to me to, to make that a fit, if you will, when we don't have any other similar properties in and around that area. You know, there, there was a time, I think back, it seemed like a year and a half or two ago, but you just mentioned, it's been a few years ago-
About three, yeah.
-that we intentionally made separate zoning so that we could differentiate where this fits and where it doesn't fit. We had a lot of areas there that we were having a lot of C2 come in and seeing it turn into a car lot, when in fact, it may not have been its prime intended purpose at the time. We didn't even know. But the reason I think that the city decided to take this approach was so that we could see whether or not it fits in the same zone area. And I'm not seeing it here. I've had a couple calls on this, actually today and yesterday, and they asked that very question. Why would that fit? And I personally don't see why that question is out of line. So, as a staff, how do you see it to fit?
We don't have anything like that in this area. So, I think, I don't know that it is necessarily a fit. I think it, you know, everything else in that area is banking, it's restaurants, it's offices, you know, insurance offices, dental offices, for the most part, for the church behind it. So, it's not really a fit for that area, this particular use in that area. I would agree.
So, in your opinion, it's not a good fit and probably not recommended by staff?
Right.
Other questions or comments? Yes, you can come up. If you'll give us your name and address, please.
Yeah. Amir Roseon, I live in Bedford, Tennessee. I am the one who filed for the, on behalf of the owner. And I've tried to manage that property in the last five, six years that he purchased that. We have had a very hard time because of the size of the building. You know, it's about 2,000 square feet. To really bring a good user, we had Synergy Bank across the street used it for about 18 months. We are hoping they stay there, but again, they built their building and moved back. So, now that we have it, the owner has two auto sales, one in White Bridge Road next to Sprint Furniture, top of the class running, you know, auto store. And he has one on Gallatin Road, close to Old Hickory Boulevard. Again, he doesn't do any repairs on site. He doesn't, all the cars are good cars. And he only wants to really, now that we have it on the market again, is going to sit there. Basically, unless you just demolish everything and build whatever that fits in the area. So, he is getting to that point, what do I do with it? So, that's when the idea came that he just turns it into an owner-user. We're not looking to lease it to anyone else anymore. So, it's either that or it's going to sit there. I've had calls myself from the church and the dentist next door about this homeless person has made a home behind the building. So, we have tried to ask her to leave, but she's, I don't think she's mentally there. So, with not having something there, it's just going to, I've seen other stuff, you know, in the back of the building that I don't want to mention. But when a property sits vacant and, and the owner has no options, it's either the owner to use it or to do something, to either demolish the building or build whatever new. Well, he doesn't, that's millions of dollars in this kind of market that he's not ready to invest that kind of money, not knowing. The area has shown again, we haven't been able to sell it. I've had on the market for sale and for lease, and the area allowed him to do a car lot when he bought it. But he changed his mind. He was too busy. So, by the time he changed his mind and he was thinking about it, the area changed. The zoning changed where he was not allowed. Actually, we came here, talked to Mr. Rixby a few years ago when he purchased that. He gave us a list of items we needed to do to change it to a car lot. Then the owner said, well, you know, I don't have time for it. Let's just lease it up. So, it sat on the market for a few years. We didn't lease it. Then the bank came. Then we said, okay, fine, the bank's there. Now, there's vacant again since November. So, we're, we're really at the point, we don't know what to do. So, we thought, okay, let's see if we can do a car lot and let him move there. We were told, actually, we were told, I don't even need to come. It fits. The way the email was sent to me, I said, do I need to bring anything? Do I need to do? They said, no, what you're asking is pretty much falls within, you know, the zoning of the area. So, you don't need anything. So, now that I'm hearing that, you know, there is a motion to really turn that down, I'm fine if that's, that's the case it is. But this is an owner-user. It's not going to be, I mean, if you Google his business on Gallatin or White Bridge Road, very clean businesses. He doesn't do this junky stuff you see on Memphis Boulevard, you know. So, I don't know what else to say to satisfy.
Well, and certainly, and I'll give it to you from my perspective, certainly I understand what you're saying and the desire for the owner to have a use with this building. One thing you said that concerns me is that, you know, you approached our planner a couple of years ago, and he gave some recommendations about what would have to happen to this lot to get it ready in order to be a car lot, when it could actually have been zoned one at the time, and the owner wasn't willing to do that. That concerns me. The second thing that, again, from my perspective, I'm not speaking for the entire commission here. But what we're trying to do is to see a consistency of use for a zone. And I just don't see how this is conducive to that when you look at what the mix is as far as office, office and professional, retail, restaurant, banking. It feels like we're trying to put something in a spot just because we got to do something with it. And from the town's perspective, and again, sympathizing with the owner's plight, we have to look at it from what, what's beneficial-
Sure.
-and what is consistent with what we're trying to do with our vision of this area. And for me, this just doesn't fit.
Sure.
You know, that's actually, it's a 1.4 acre parcel, right?
Yeah.
You've got a lot of good use right there if you can find the right fit. That's just my opinion. And whether or not you'd have to take that building down or be able to lease that building out might be beneficial to you, I don't know. But-
Yeah.
You know, when you make an investment like that, it's a property purchase and you have to weigh all those things out when you, when you make that purchase.
Sure.
If you sit on it long enough, sound like you have or they have, then you may have missed the boat on what grew around it, you know. It just, there's a pattern of businesses down there that is just, like Chairman says, it's just not conducive to the uses that we see around it, so.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, yeah, certainly has options. And when I say they gave us a list of items to do, it's not that the site needed it. For instance, parking for the cars, handicap parking, water fountain in the building, Eagles, Eagles, which already has it all. It was a matter for him, he had two other surviving businesses, and he thought, okay, let's just lease it. I can do it later. But then the zoning changed on him.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You mentioned he had businesses on White Bridge, I think you said, and also in Gallatin. Are there car lots or car dealerships near where his are?
Oh, yeah, plenty.
And there's, there's what we're saying, you see? That, that's kind of the thing is some of those areas have, you know, we have a part of our, our city here that has quite a few of them as well. One of the reasons we got a little proactive so we could make sure we can kind of keep an eye on what fits and what may not fit. So, you just answered my question. You said his other businesses are surrounded by similar things, and this just isn't.
Hey, I'm a real estate broker. I'm not arguing with you. I'm all, I'm all for growth. I'm all for, you know, good businesses coming around. But I'm also for, you know, again, this, this is going to be the only car lot in the area. In Asheville, it's like 1,000 feet, you know.
If he's got some successful businesses, just a thought.
Yeah.
If he were to take this parcel and do something different with it, rehab it in a way that he put retail or strip center or something like that, it's a 1.4 acre parcel.
Right.
He might have him something right there. I don't know. I don't, I don't want to speculate that. But for me, and if you'd like, Chairman, I'll set this up with a motion. For me, it's just not conducive to our fit. So, I'm going to have to make a motion based on that to deny it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second to deny. Any further questions or further discussion? All those in favor of denying this rezoning request signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Our next item under rezoning request is Seven Oaks Oil and Loop Center, Seven Oaks Business Center Lot 8, Seven Oaks Boulevard, rezoning C2 to PCD.
Yes, this is a rezoning request, C2 to PCD. As you said, it is on Seven Oaks Boulevard. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and R1. And the future land use plan would support an office, retail, multifamily mix in this area. This proposed PCD is for automobile service business, an oil and loop business. It is less than one acre. C5 does have, which would allow this use by right, or for special exception, but would allow the use. Does require a one acre lot size. This is only about 6,600 of an acre, so it is less than that. They are, the packets in front of you there that has the information with regards to the layout of the building. It is a, almost all brick building, this proposed. It's a relatively typical layout as far as the property layout and, and parking and all that. It's what you expect on a use such as this. They are proposing, again, they do border a little bit on the, kind of, I guess that's the northwestern corner, one residential lot, a little bit. And so, they are, they are proposing a buffer there as, as would be required. They did, we also, we talked about it with them. They did show, one of the things to point out, the access from Seven Oaks Boulevard, there would be a joint access between this lot and the lot directly to the east. That would, we can provide future access to that lot. And it does also line up with the existing driveway to the convenience store across the street as well.
Kevin, one of the two lots beside this, had it been approved for development as well?
On either side, no. We just, we did recently see a subdivision flat-
Yes.
-creating these three lots. But they, we have not seen any site plan on those two.
Okay.
And we did have a site plan a few months ago on the other side of Seven Oaks Boulevard, further west.
That was a commercial development?
It was a commercial development. It actually ultimately was withdrawn. I think it may be coming back. But, but these two lots have not had any type of site plan since then.
Where the back of the residential, it looks like anyway from here, and I believe it's right, backs up to that property, it's already got trees in there anyway.
That's correct.
Pretty old growth type trees.
That's correct.
Kevin, if I recall correctly, we have in the public shopping center area an approved auto repair, Christian Brothers, I believe.
That's correct.
It's across, across the automobile.
Yeah.
It takes a ride across from General Forest.
Yeah.
So, that, is it, do we know anything about it? Because it's been approved for- Because it's been approved for a long time.
It has been approved for quite some time, and I have not heard anything in a while. So I don't know what happened there.
That was approved as a PUD, was it not?
That's correct.
Okay. So we've fairly defined what can go there.
Right.
In the future. The one thing I have, a question you may be able to help me. If not, if someone's here representing it, is the stacking as far as moving the cars in and off so that we're not out on Seven Oaks Boulevard?
Yeah, the cars will actually, my understanding anyway, is the cars actually will come around through the back of the building and go out the front. So that actually will be, I don't have a dimension on that. There'll be several room for, I think it's three, I think it's three across. You have three bays. So you'll have three, you could have potentially three rows of cars coming out the back, and you have room for at least two behind the building, and then as you come around. So you have room for several cars there.
Matt Taylor from SEC, 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And Kevin's right, the operation is a counterclockwise motion. So you come to the back, so it allows as much stacking as possible. Here, the customers do not get out of their car, so their goal is to get somebody in the door and out in 10 minutes, so it's very quick. We think it's a very, very good service and complement the area well for the people living around here. So happy to answer any questions. I've got.
I know it's in front of me, but why don't you just walk me through the elevations as far as your finishes and whatnot?
So all the finishes are brick. We've got a couple of different colors of brick on there. And then where the sign goes, which is a small area on the tower, is, it's a square of EFS right there, but the rest of the building is brick, and then you have standing seam metal roof. And my understanding is the EFS is just around the sign area because it makes it easier to take on, take off, and do the maintenance.
So the sign's actually attached in that area?
Yes.
It'd be basically on, kind of on two sides, kind of at the corner, one facing Seven Oaks and one facing to the east side, invisible from Seven Oaks. That would be the only area of EFS.
Matt, and it looks like you're also supplementing the buffer with what's there.
Yes, sir. We would plant, obviously, we want, if there are any trees on our side of the property line there, we'd like to save those, and then we'll add to to comply with the city's type C buffer there. And we've tried to locate all of our operations, the dumpster, our building away from that residence as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt while he's up here?
Looks like it's got good cur ratio and stuff to be able to get in and out of this room, so.
So lower rollups, especially on the front, are they going to be tinted? Are you going to be able to see all the way through the building? Do you know?
They're clear glass?
So they're clear glass.
Okay.
Which actually winds up being a very attractive look whenever I've seen that on other uses. It's a lot better than the old metal doors that we used to see, a lot of.
Sometimes they can use some tint that's not very pleasant to look at either.
Yes, you're right about that.
It's a good job on design review. I think it looks, it's a pretty building.
Yeah, I wish I could take credit for that.
What is your proposed number of cars you envision in stacking to go into the bays for the back?
So we've got at least enough room for at least three without really starting to interrupt anything. But I think if we stacked all the way out to the road, you'd probably have up to 20. So that's three per lane, and so you'd probably have up to 20, and we would never have that many just operationally.
Cars, yeah.
If we do, then we're probably going to be looking for another location, so.
Got some land right next to it.
That's right. Probably know somebody would sell it to me, too.
Other questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Kevin, I think you guys have looked at this. Do you see this as something you can support?
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was with staff comments, of course.
Staff comments.
Motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, this takes us to preliminary plants.
That's correct.
Our first item under preliminary plants, Amerton Section 4, incarnation drive, owner, developer, Century Communities, care of Todd Dupana.
This is, it's actually a preliminary plant that you all have seen before. It has, but it's been more than a year, so it has expired and other, get ready to get going on it. This is, this is Section 4 of Amerton. It's actually the last section. It's 41 lots on 13.25 acres as part of the Amerton PRD. This plant is consistent with that PRD. We had a couple of comments, or several comments from CUD, that they'll send you to work with CUD on. There is adequate fire flow in this area to meet our requirements. Again, we had just very minimal comments this week, because it had already come through the process once before, so we were already, they've already kind of met a lot of our comments from before. So like I say, it's primarily some CUD issues, really, three through, well, four through 12, actually, they'll need to work with CUD on. So that's all I have, and we would recommend it to you.
So I'm hearing, consistent with what we saw and with the original submission, in that you're recommending approval with staff comments?
That's correct.
Any other questions or discussion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Andrew. I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further questions or any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Greystone Phase 1A and 1B, Rocky Fork Road, owner, developer, Greystone West LLC.
Yeah, this is a preliminary plant. This is the first, first phase 1A and B of the Greystone Development, which is one we looked at recently, the last few months for annexation and zoning. This phase is 220 lots on 60.6 acres. It is part of the Greystone PRD. We had several comments. Several of these are standard comments, really all, several of them are, I'll go ahead and highlight those, 1 through 4 are really all standard comments that would need to remain. Comment number five, we'd ask for road names and 911 approval for those names. They have shown those for several of those names now. There's still a few more they need to add, so we would want to keep that comment. Comment six, we would need to keep, it's really an informational comment, just, and they know it, but this area will flow to the new olive branch sewer main that is under construction. And so they'll have to, really can't get any building permits till that gets completed as well as the sewer main from this development to connect to that, that may, will have to be completed as well. They could certainly begin work, start moving dirt, but they can't get any building permits. Comments number seven and eight have been addressed, one regarding the plant being stamped, and then number eight, the front entry garages. We do require the 35 foot front setback on those front entry garages, and so they have shown that now, and so that has been addressed. Number nine was a comment that came from the fire department regarding some fire turnarounds. And I did send some information just today to the fire department. I don't know if they've had an opportunity to review that yet or not. So I will, probably want to keep that one and let them work through that with the fire department. Comment number 10 was just an informational, they have some big plans and they're under review for the actual construction documents. Number 11, we would want to keep that. It's regarding some of the, some of the townhome lots, they're showing lots, or the buildings close to the property line with a common area in between to achieve the building separation. But we would want to keep that with, with regards to the fire code, oh, the residential code, as far as the construction of those walls. So, and then, again, they're aware of that. Number 12, we do still need to keep the dimensions, they just, still need to label the dimensions of the parallel. They got the width, not the length of those. And we also need the dimensions on the other guest parking as well. They have taken care of number 13 with regards to the alleys, sorry, the hydrants at the alley streets. Number 14 is just an informational comment, can be removed, but there is an existing, some, a few existing customers from CUD that were there when it was annexed, and so they will continue to serve those customers for a little bit of time. So 15, 16, and 17 are from CUD that they would need to remain as well. Just coordinate that with CUD as they, as we work through that, and they, those, that water line becomes Smyrna, they'll become Smyrna customers at some point, but at this time, they're still CUD customers, so they got to work through that part of it, so. So in the end, we can take off 7, 8, 10, 13, and 14.
And all of the remain?
And all of those would need to remain. Again, primarily informational type comments.
Yeah.
Again, it is consistent with the PRD that you all looked at. Again, we looked at this quite a bit. This is, this is some single family and some townhome. There's a mix of both in this, and this is the phasing really as they, as we talked about previously. This is beginning, they're showing the rideaway dedication along Rocky Fork Road, we talked about. Of course, there's quite a bit of remaining commercial area, or C2 zoned area that's, some of the roads are coming through it, but would be undeveloped at this time, unless you get back to the single family and the townhome piece of this.
Anything else?
That's all I got? Yes. With those comments.
With the comments, right. Okay. Well, I think what I'm hearing loud and clear from you is this is consistent with what's previously been approved for this.
Right.
And as far as the alley or roadway, will we work that out at site or prior to?
Well, we, well, it's part of the working through that now with the construction plans, and if there's any changes on that, we'll, they'll show up at the final plant as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Because that'll be where the rideaways actually get dedicated and all that.
Other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is Sundell Subdivision Section 3, Vountiful Drive in Generosity Way, owner, developer, Scott Butler.
This is Phase 3, or Section 3 of the Sundell Development, this is a part of the Sundell PRD. This is 43 lots on 8.65 acres. This is an extension of two existing streets that are part of the development, and it is consistent with the approved PRD. We had a few comments. Really, the first five are all standard comments and would need to remain. Comment six regarding the temporary turnarounds, they have, they are now showing asphalt and not just gravel on those turnarounds, so that can be addressed, has been addressed and can be removed. And we asked them regarding the mail kiosk. It is actually in Section 2. We have a separate page that we just had one copy of, but there's, the existing kiosk in Section 2 can serve Section 3. So it's large enough and adequate enough, so has parking and all that provided. So we can remove number seven as well. So really, just the five standard comments is all we would have left.
Yeah, having moved, I'm very familiar with the mail kiosk now.
Yes.
It's different.
Yeah.
Is staff recommending approval with comments?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion from the commission?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item under preliminary plants is Stone Trace, Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley Parkway, owner, developer, Buster Waldron Family Limited.
Yeah, this is a commercial subdivision, C2 zoned, eight lots, 14.1 acres. This preliminary plant, again, was unapproved in July of 2019, has expired without a preliminary or a final plant being submitted, so they did have to submit a plant. It has also been revised a little bit with regards to some of the lots. Not the roadways or nothing, none of that has changed, but some of the lot lines and a few of the utility locations have changed a little bit. So this is revised to reflect the most current and up-to-date plans. We did have a couple of comments, number two regarding some of the easements on lots 4, 4A and B need to be labeled into added dimensions, and they have addressed that one, so that can be removed. There is also the sewer reuse line along Jeanie Lane. It will be on the, well, the north side of Jeanie Lane. They did show that, and it is in a public easement because it is a public line as well, and so that has been addressed as well. So really, we have no, no real comments left on this one, so. Again, it does, it's consistent with what we had looked at before, other than some of the lot lines have changed a little bit and things like that, but nothing, the road layout, still showing Jeanie Lane, you can go into the property line, Eden Drive coming from Sam Ridley, the rideaway dedication along Old Nashville Highway with the improvements that are being made as a part of this development, Old Nashville Highway. All that is being shown.
Staff recommending approval?
Staff recommends approval.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Only one. The lot one, is that soon to start, or do we know?
They are waiting on, my understanding from that owner, they're waiting on the developer to get finished enough to where they can start.
Just curious.
I think they're waiting to close until all the utility is in the road and everything is there, so.
Had a few questions about that. Just wondering, wondering when.
Move to approve with staff comments. I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to final plants, the first agenda item is Cedar Creek, Eden Springs Road West, owner, developer, Alcorn Properties.
Yeah, this is a PUD that was approved a couple of years ago. There's three lots proposed. Lot 3, the largest lot. Lot three, the largest lot, I believe it's lot three, are numbered there. The, you know, the largest lot is a townhome lot, and the other two lots are commercial, C4-type uses that would be allowed there. It's 14.1 acres, three lots. We just had one comment regarding adding the owner's signatures. I will point out that there's later on in your agenda is a mandatory referral, and this plat and that mandatory referral go together. The town actually owns a portion of the, what is shown on those two, the two commercial lots. And then, and basically there, the developer or Alcorn Properties has also requested, basically there's gonna be a swap of some land there. So the, in the end, the town and the developer each have a usable lot. And so there's also a part of that request is there is some, the, the right-of-way along Percival Street there, there was more than was needed. And so part of this would be incorporating that right-of-way into those two adjoining lots as well and become, you know, usable space for the townhome development as well as what the town would eventually use our lot for as well. So again, the plat is in, is in order, and I would certainly recommend it to you, like I said, in the future, or down in, later in your agenda there, we'll have the mandatory referral that we'll have to go to council to, to actually formalize that land swap. So that's all I've got.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments? Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to approve and a second with staff comments. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item under final plants, Stone Trace Old Nashville Highway and Sam Ridley Parkway West. Owner developer, Vester Waldron Family Limited.
Yeah, and this is just the final plat. They have gone ahead and we're okay with that in this situation. Typically, we'd like to see a month or two in between the preliminary and the final because typically, we still need the construction plans, but that's not the case on this one. So this is the final plat for what you just looked at on preliminary. It's eight lots, 14.1 acres, C2 zoning. Again, we did have a few comments. We would need to keep number one regarding the owner's signature. There is a private frontage road, and that's, they have indicated that would be, basically the, each lot will be responsible for their portion of it. It would, that frontage road would kind of be between Sam Ridley and Jeanie Lane, and it would provide access primarily to the lots on the west side of Needham Drive down to lot one. So really, I think it affects three lots, two, maybe three lots. And so that, that ownership and maintenance would be on each, each lot owner. That's how they have, are setting it up. Again, we had some comments, three regarding easements being labeled. That's been addressed. The zoning on the west, they had zone as R6 is now PRD, actually. So that's just recently changed. And then show proposed utilities, the, there were some changes again between as construction has happened, and so that, that has been addressed now, so that can be taken off. And then again, number six to show that sewer reuse line and easement for it on the west side of Jeanie Lane, and they have shown that as well. We would recommend this to you.
Questions to Kevin or any comments?
Do we have concerns about the response on the private frontage road? Is that consistent with other similar scenarios?
It is. I mean, we've, sometimes there's a, an HOA or Property Owners Association set up. We've had them both in that situation. We've also had them where, you know, each individual owner kind of maintains it. We just want, mainly want to be sure, make clear that the town wasn't gonna be the one maintaining it because we've had, we had, we've had one in a situation where, because sometimes they get built and they almost look like, you know, public roads. And we've had owners asking us to do some maintenance and, well, that's, that's your responsibility. We're not gonna make, you know, fix the hole in the road. That's yours. So we just want to make sure that it's clear as they are setting up, as they're selling these lots, that they are responsible for it and the town's not. That's our, that was our main concern.
Kevin, have we looked at traffic flow? I know I think we, we discussed it sometime last year, from lot one going out to Jeanie Lane and to Old Nashville Highway?
Yes, yeah, we've, that, that site plan was approved. Quite frankly, it's gonna have to get a building permit pretty soon, it's gonna have to come back to you.
Okay, yeah.
But, but yeah, we did look at that quite a bit. And so of course, their signal is, Jeanie Lane and Old Nashville Highway will also be signalized, and there's a lot of other improvements that'll be made as well. But yes, we did look at that quite a bit with them at that time, yeah.
And we had a lot of discussion around that, didn't we?
We did.
Just enhancing that Old Nashville Highway, that side of the Old Nashville Highway's gonna help quite a bit with all the stacking problems we've got over there. And I think the signal will help a lot too.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
Have a motion to approve with staff comments from Andrew. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mitchell?
First one we have tonight is a project for Harts Branch Village, which is a residential development comprised of 167 townhomes on 22.18 acres. Project would be completed in approximately three phases. Phase one with 58 units, phase two with 56 units, and phase three with 53 units. The applicant has noted an approximate timeframe for phasing for this development with phase one being proposed to start approximately June of this year. Phase two in January 2022 and phase three in January 2023. They have noted that this would also be conducted with demand as well, so these timeframes are rough estimates for what they anticipate. Townhomes would range in size from 1,400 to 2,200 square feet in size. Surrounding zoning of this development consists of R1, R3, R4, R6, and a PUD, which is Stitcher's Playhouse to the south. Vehicle use area at the site, 4.04 acres for the entire development. Acquire 17,982 square feet of landscaping. They're proposing for 24,350. Parking, 334 spaces are required at two per unit, and they're proposing for a total of 572 spaces, which is comprised of a one-car garage and two driveway spaces at each unit along with 71 guest spaces. Handicap spaces are not required per this development, being it is a townhome-style development. They are showing one space in one of the amenity areas. Landscape plan shows will oak trees lining Rock Springs Road along with a variety of canopy trees, including oak and maple varieties along streetscape throughout the entire development. Variety of trees and shrubs are proposed to be planted in front of, in front of and behind each unit along within common spaces. Architecture elevations per the approved PRD show a mix of stack stone, brick, fiber cement siding on front elevations with fiber cement siding on the rear and sides. Part of this property is within the floodplain, the 500-year and 500-year. 27 units are shown to be located within the 100-year floodplain. The minimum finished floor elevation must be elevated at least three foot above the base flood elevation, while the ground shall be at least one foot above. A couple of standard comments to remain and staff comments. Staff comment one, we asked them to show the utilities extended to adjoining property lines per the approved PRD. There was one on, I believe it was road A on the left side of the development. They have the manhole not extended fully to the property line. They have an easement that would allow access to it, but we would just ask that they relocate that manhole to the property line. Comment two, submit road names and E911 approval for those road names. The applicant has indicated that those road names are currently still being selected, so when we receive them, we'll address it. That comment will have to remain. Ask comment three to show fire hydrant at the south end of access drive A. They have addressed that comment. Comment four to show service, sewer services for all units. They have addressed that comment as well. Comment five, all public easements will need to be dedicated via an approved final plat at some point in the future, but the off-site sewer easement will be dedicated via mandatory referral. Comment six, a letter of map revision will be required from FEMA for the floodplain alterations. The applicant has noted that they will do this once grading is completed. And comment seven has been completed. We asked them to coordinate with Rutherford County Schools regarding the bus stop location on Rock Springs Road. The applicant has indicated they did this back in February of 2020, and the Rutherford County Board of Education did agree with their location and deem it acceptable. So all in all, staff comments three, four, and seven can be removed. We'll leave staff comments one, two, five, and six. And with that, staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Questions or discussion from the commission?
As the drawing, these are the sidewalks down, five-foot sidewalks.
There's, either sidewalks within the development and then their sidewalk as well along Rock Springs Road, along their portion of Rock Springs Road, it would be required as well.
Yes, sir. Just go ahead. We'll recognize you, give you your name and address.
Eric Olson, Anderson Delcamps, 618 Grassmere Park Drive, Nashville, Tennessee. We, you know, we agree to, we try to keep it out of that buffer as far as extending that sewer. You know, we can go ahead and extend it a little bit closer to the property line.
Okay.
No issue with that. If there's any other questions, I can answer them.
Did your sidewalk question get answered, Ian?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Is this the time to talk about the traffic study that was done?
Yeah, we did have it, I don't know if Charles is here or not. We did receive a traffic study. My recollection was it didn't recommend any improvements, I believe that's correct.
Yeah, and that was a concern.
Yeah.
I live there, and it's hard even for me to get on my driveway now.
Yeah. So Charles, Charles, you don't, Charles is our town engineer, he might could, could address, he's, he's looked at that more closely than I have, so.
Right, we're just looking at, the main thing on the traffic study was just putting the center turn lanes in, so we'll be looking at that when we get more into the site planning and construction as the queue length on those, but that-
So it hasn't been ruled out yet?
No.
Has it seemed, the study seemed to say nothing needed to be done?
Yeah.
You know, that, that we received. And that was concerning when you're putting quite a few more cars on the road.
Yeah. Well, we'll, yeah, we'll look at that when, like I said, we, construction plans, we'll look at those further when we get, and it's where we're reviewing those for that.
Other questions? This is what, consistent with the prior?
It was consistent with the PRD approval, yes.
Any other questions?
Is there another? What I'm seeing here, I'm seeing one access in and one access out. Is there?
No, there's two. There's, 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 I'll go back to the, there's, there's two access points.
Okay, is the one, they were trying to line it up or get it close to the other street? What's that? Is it Branch Trail or whatever comes out there into the other development? Or is it closer to where the mailboxes are now on the current property?
The entrance to the east, it's actually offset from that road because that, that road lines up the existing apartments.
Correct.
On the north side.
Right.
So we're, we're offset from that.
How much? Because if you get cars coming out of those other two and they're close, it's gonna be, they're gonna be on top of each other.
Over 150 feet.
Okay. But that'll be, look at turn lanes getting in and out of there as well, right?
That'd be something we'd look at.
I mean, they'll have, they'll have to come across the other apartments, I guess, over there to get in and out on that side. Does that make sense? If you got a, the one, I, I said on the north of it, it's far enough up the road, I, I think it's okay. It's where the empty lot's at now, where you always see the deer at, but that's a, that's a good stretch. But you've got three right there, pretty close to each other, and nobody drives a speed limit on that road, ever. So if you do, you get tailgated and honked at, but that may be a concern we have for the city too, is, I know the police sit out there some, but 30, I think it's 30 or 35, and it's usually 50 or 55 through there. So that may need to be addressed as well, especially coming out of that, where you get three access points coming out of this development, coming out of, I think it's Branch Trail there, and out of the current development that's there. So it's a, it's a lot going on right there, pretty, pretty tight.
Charles, you're on board?
What, what part of the property is it the same side that main road comes in on? Is that that lower part that's in the flood?
Yeah, that, that southeastern corner is where the, where the floodplain is.
Seems like the initial plans we looked at, there was only maybe a part of a building or something, back corners maybe that were in it?
There's, it's the, there's, I think there's 27, I think we looked at, that there's 27 that are affected by the floodplain.
Okay.
Current floodplain boundary as it's mapped anyway. And so they'll, they'll have, I'm sure what they'll do, most of those type developments, they'll be a cut and fill balance, and they'll, they'll, buildings themselves, the finished floor elevations will be, at least have to be at least three feet above. The garages have to be at least one foot above that flood elevation. And quite often, they'll, they'll do enough cut and fill that they'll actually remove those, the buildings out of the floodplain and, because they'll create more storage within the existing floodplain area by, by lowering the, the ground elevation.
You're building up in essence out of the floodplain.
Right. And then, but, but you're, you're not, you're creating enough storage area for a flood by, by lowering some other area of elevation.
To move the, move the water in that area.
To cut and fill balance that they have to do there. And so, so yeah, the, the area that's the floodplain is primarily is that, if that would be the southeastern corner, that area. It's a pretty large area. Several of the, the mobile homes that used to be on this property were in the floodplain, so.
Yeah, because they were on that side.
On that side, yeah.
Pretty much the whole frontage, the Rock Springs frontage is floodplain.
On that southeast, on the eastern part of it, yes, sir.
Now, were they showing playgrounds or any kind of things in that area, extra parking? Seems like we saw that at one time, maybe.
Yeah, there is. There, there's, there's areas, in that area, there's also, it's scattered throughout the development. There are playground areas, mail kiosks, pavilions, there's a dog park, kind of in this area as you, the eastern entrance, there's a dog park as you're there with some, some parking there as well. And, and the parking, again, is kind of scattered throughout development as far as
Other questions or discussion? Do I have a motion?
A move to approve with staff comments and recommendations of reviewing the traffic study and seeing if there's any necessary added lanes or turn lanes that need to be implemented before construction or permit.
Second?
That's a long motion, I know.
It's a good one.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, including the traffic study review and implementation. If I'm summarizing that correctly for you?
That's, that's real-
That's, that's real good, you did that better than I did.
And a second, any further discussion?
All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item is Sam Griffin Warehouse, Sam Griffin Road, Wade Harrod Road. Owner, developer, vendor, L and W LLC.
This is a, another site plan, vendor L and W LLC is proposing for 143,179 square foot warehouse building. Property has road frontage. Property has road frontage on Sam Griffin and Wade Harrod Road. Property is owned I-1, light industrial, surrounded by I-3, which is heavy industrial. There are several parcels on Wade Harrod Road which are industrial zone but being used for single-family residential homes. Future building depicted on previous plans roughly 30,000 square feet in size is going to be proposed west of the current building. Proposed warehouse would have two parking lots for vehicles off both Sam Griffin Road and three building sides with truck loading docks. All, all vehicles maneuvering through the site will have access via Sam Griffin Road. Previous plans showed an access off of Wade Harrod. Previous plans we just received back this week have shown that access off of Sam Griffin, or off of Wade Harrod being removed. So, to clarify, there's only going to be two accesses for vehicles to maneuver through the site off of Sam Griffin. There's going to be one to access the long side of the building off of Sam Griffin for trucks to access loading docks. Square footage of vehicular use area, 2.98 acres, which would require 10,403 square feet of landscaping. Applicants proposing for 17,752 square feet. Total parking required 50 spaces, they're proposing for 53, and that would require three handicap spaces, and they're showing all three handicap spaces as well. Landscape plan shows a variety of trees and shrubs lining both road fringes along Wade Harrod Road and Sam Griffin Road. Trees are also proposed to be planted around the parking lot and landscape islands. In addition to landscaping along western property line adjoining residential occupied lots that we talked about earlier, there are, there's a six-foot privacy fence that will be installed to create an added buffer, to buffer from this industrial use to those residentially occupied lots. Architecture elevations submitted show 3D rendering of a metal building with roll-up doors along the southern, eastern, and western building elevations. The elevations around the office areas, there's two office areas on the north, northwestern, southeastern quadrants of the building. That area of the building is proposed to be an EPAS material. Two standard comments, we got a list of staff comments to go over. Staff comment one, project cannot, uh, the project can't connect to the existing six-inch water line on Wade Harrod Road and the 24-inch water line on Sam Griffin Road for domestic or fire purposes. The six inches operated by CUD and the 24-inch by Town of Smyrna. This area lies within CUD's service area. Staff comment two, reduced pressure type backwater valve is required. They have addressed that comment, that can be removed. Comment three, we asked them to add fire hydrants within 350 feet each other, which would be adding two more on Sam Griffin roadside and one on Wade Harrod Road side of the building. They have addressed that comment. Comment four, we asked what are the proposed building materials? Previous elevations they submitted did not depict the building materials. The previous elevations that they have submitted do address this comment with metal and EPAS. Staff comment can be removed. Staff comment five, rear in the elevations do not match the site plan. No entrance on the northwest side of the building to get into the office area, so we asked them to clarify this. This comment's going to have to be remained because there's two offices depicted on the site plan. On the elevations only show entrance to one of those office spaces, so we're going to have to ask they address that comment. Comment six, indicate where the front of the building would be located. The applicant has addressed this by saying the front of the building will face Sam Griffin Road. Comment seven, Wade Harrod Road does not have sufficient width to be utilized for large truck traffic. As I mentioned earlier, there was a access off of Wade Harrod, but they have addressed this comment by getting rid of that access. Comment eight, we asked them to provide structure type in order to calculate the required fire flow. Comment nine, submit water and sewer construction plans to be reviewed by TDEC. Comment 10, to add a check dam detail to the detail sheet, they have addressed that comment. Comment 11, we asked them to show where the future building outline will be located in size. They have showed the location with the outline, they have not shown the size yet, so we're going to ask that they just label the size of that future building. Comment 12, CUD's existing infrastructure is not adequate to meet the fire flow requirement of 2,000 gallons per minute for this development. Comments 13 through 25 are all listed by CUD. I was in talks with CUD about this, they have indicated that these comments will only apply if the project is serviced by CUD. It is within CUD's service area, so if major offsite improvements are required, CUD may choose to relinquish the water services to Smyrna. CUD board will have to review this before turning services over to Town of Smyrna. The next board meeting for CUD's board to discuss this isn't until April 27th, so the end of this month, in which a definite answer may not be given until that time when they have adequate time to meet and discuss. So, at this time, comments 13 through 25 will only apply if CUD is servicing this. Comments 2, 3, 4, 7, and 10 can fully be removed, so we're going to be keeping on comments 1, 5, 6, 8, 9, 11, and 12. With that, staff would recommend approval if all the necessary upgrades to the roadway and water can be made as mentioned above.
Questions for Mitchell?
If CUD decides to relinquish that to Smyrna, is there, how close are we with water up there to provide flow and?
Matt Taylor from SCC. The town actually has a, I think it's a 24-inch along Sam Griffin that has adequate pressure and flow. That's actually, I think, what's serving, I think, maybe it's a backfeed to Nissan. It's also serving the warehouses directly across the street. So, we've got the water service availability over to CUD for them to decide whether they can serve this or not. And if not, then we'd have to go through that formal relinquishment process. So, it's there, we've even talked to CUD about doing a hybrid where the town provides the fire protection and CUD does the domestic. So, they're in the process of evaluating how to achieve that.
Okay. Kevin, talk to me a little bit if there were a split, I guess, water.
Yeah, having, having two different water utilities in the same building, I think we had some concerns about that. CUD's kind of, they, they talked to us about it a little bit. I think we would prefer, and of course, we'll work with the developer and CUD to work through this whole process. I think we would prefer either CUD serves everything or they relinquish it and the Town of Smyrna provides everything. I think would be our preference, certainly, um, just because of, I, just, you can see that could be issues down the run, I guess. We have a good, pretty good working relationship with CUD, but I think having two different providers of the same utility in the same building doesn't seem to be something we would want to see happen, so. I, I'm, I'm fine, I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with the, the planning commission approving the site plan with us working through that issue with CUD. If they do relinquish the area, I don't know how, I guess it may have to come back to council for us to formally take over it or whatever, but, otherwise, if, if they don't relinquish it, then they would just have to look at what, what upgrades are necessary because they will have to meet our minimum fire flow requirements, which is fairly substantial. I mean, I think if, even if it is a sprinkled building, I think it's at least 2,000 gallons a minute at 20 feet in size, so. But I, I mean, I think we would feel, feel better about it being all or, all or the other, not hybrid, personally.
So, as far as that process goes, certainly, Matt, you, you kind of hear where we're coming from on that when you're in discussions.
Yes, sir, and our preference is to just be in one or the other. We don't want two water bills and complicate our lives and, you know, somebody's going to forget down the road. So, it was just an idea that had been thrown out there, but I understand, Kevin, and where the town's perspective is. I'm sure CUD has the same opinion, they don't want to be mixing water. They can't be responsible for what they get from you guys and vice versa, so I'm sure that's where we'll end up, is one or the other, so.
Kevin, you see adequate landscaping as far as blocking the views of, potentially blocking the views. This is industrial zone, I realize that.
It is, it is I-1 zoning, yeah, but yeah, they, they certainly are, they're exceeding our requirements from a landscaping standpoint.
How, how close are those power lines in here? Because I know there's some main lines that run, run in that area as well.
I think there is an easement in that area where there is, uh, some parking on this, this area in here. I think there is a power line easement there, I believe. But it's certainly, there, there's not an issue with it with regards to the building or anything.
Mike, I'm, I'm thinking you have something to tell us.
Yep, water, so, you know, we're not for splitting service here. We'll work with CUD and either they can upgrade their, their services or we can serve it. Uh, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but as far as one of us serving fire flow, one domestic, that doesn't work.
What I'm hearing though is you guys are confident you will get it worked out one way or the other.
I don't think we'll have a problem getting it worked out.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looks like our last item under site plans is Steel Technologies Phase 3, 7609 Florence Road. Yeah, let's, let's make sure we show Tim not participating in the discussion or his standing.
Not participating in the previous one or this one?
Okay.
Steel Technologies has an existing industrial warehouse on the corner of Florence Road and Rebel Road, supplier to Nissan as well. The existing building is 161,470 square feet. The proposed expansion for this Phase 3 would be 79,598 square feet, which is just shy of 50% of the building size currently. Surrounding zonings consists of R1, R3, and I3 with Topra America joining to the north. 10 additional spaces are proposed to be added to the existing parking lot to accommodate for employee parking. Vehicle use area, existing is approximately 10.1 acres, and they're proposing to add an additional 5,329 square feet. Square footage of landscaping, 426 square feet, which is basing off the additional pave, previous pavement they're adding. Proposing for 600, so they're exceeding that by over 150 square feet. Total parking, 55 spaces required, they're proposing for 69. And then the handicap space is required of three, and they're showing three as well. Landscape plan shows retention of the existing vegetation with street trees and shrubs along Florence and Rebel Road as well as around the parking lot. Additional landscaping is proposed around the parking lot with a mixture of shrubbery and trees. Architecture elevations which were submitted show the addition to be built with metal. This would match the existing bu, building elevations. Couple of standard comments that will need to remain as well as staff comments. Staff comment one, we asked them to show a two-to-four inch rock diameter at the construction entrances. They have addressed that comment. Comment two, sheet four to replace turf reinforcement matting with riprap. They have addressed that comment as well. Comment three, number of proposed parking spaces they showed, ADA requires three spaces, they were showing two. They have added the additional handicap parking space, so that comment can be removed as well. Comment four, to extend the eight-inch line across the back end of the building and adding a fire hydrant to the back corner. The comment has been addressed and can be removed as well. Comment five, we asked how the proposed roll-up door on the east side of the building will be accessed. There was kind of a mix-up between the elevations and the site plan, but this has been remiated and there is no, uh, roll-up door on that side of the building to be accessed. So, in a result, this comment can be removed as well. So, all the staff comments have been addressed, and we're going to be left with the remaining standard comments. And with this, staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Mitchell?
Yeah, but was this the site where we had some landscaping dying off a while back?
Yeah, because they have, they've kind of, they have refurbished that. We did have them show it a few, on the last page or maybe the next to last page, show that existing buffer.
It's been refurbished.
Yeah, right, just to remind them that they need to maintain it. So, that is something, we, we did have a complaint, it's been some time ago, we called them and they took care of it, but.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve with staff comments and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last item, uh, is mandif, mandatory referral Cedar Creek PUD land swap and right-of-way abandonment with the Town of Smyrna owner, developer, Alcorn Properties.
Again, as I discussed earlier when we were talking about the plat for the Cedar Creek PUD, this is a request from that owner to abandon some, part of the existing right-of-way of Percival Street. And then, basically from Big Sun Lane to the northernmost property line of Map 33, parcel 7101, which is their property. There, there is, this will be each of that existing roadway, it's, is in excess. And so, that, with that, that right-of-way would be incorporated in, into the two adjoining tracks. And then, um, and, and then, as we said earlier, in addition, there's that existing track that the town owns. And then, the Alcorn Properties owns the other one, and so this would facilitate a swap of land, which would basically give both entities in the end a buildable lot, which we really don't have currently. And so, um, this will be a, a win-win for everybody with regards to that. Again, that, that final plat was, was what you looked at earlier. If you look at, on the right-hand side of your packet, if you have that in front of you or in the, in the packet as well, the, um, there is kind of a cross-hatched area would be given from the town to the developer, and then the developer would give the town there that's kind of in that striped area as a part of lot two. And so, I think it's actually a net gain in, in square footage for the town a little bit, so. And we, this is, the planning commission is required to review these and then recommend to council whether or not it is consistent with your adopted comprehensive plan, and staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin?
Move to approve with comments.
I have a motion to approve the comments, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second with comments. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto the April bond review.
Yeah, we had several this month. The first one is part of the Creekside Noel Lane. This was a sewer bond. And they have completed that and have submitted ASBELTS. And so we would recommend release of that one as it is complete. Patent retreat, phase one. This is one, did talk to that developer. They are ready to get that one completed. Did ask for the punch lists on us. We would recommend a six-month extension on that one because they do have several things they got to clean up there, including finishing the final topping. Park at the Meadows, section two, this one is built out. It has been, we've had it a couple of years now. Did speak with the folks who are running that development now. They are planning on paving this early summer. And so we would want to extend that one to give them time to get that work finished. Buckingham Place, section two, phase two. This is one, did not hear back from the developer there. Again, they haven't finished the topping yet. So we would want to give them six more months there to try to finish that up. And Woodcrest, section four is in the, the same situation with regards to that. So we would recommend a six-month extension there. Lake knee, section one, this is when we've only had this one a year. This was a very large bond because it had a lot of off-site improvements, including the Martin Lane intersection reconstruction as well. So quite a bit of off-site sewer. Those items have been completed. And so they did request that we reduce this bond to accommodate for the fact that a lot of that work has been done now. And so we would recommend a reduction of that one down to fifty thousand and do extend that one year instead of six months because this, we have only had it one year. And they're only about half built out. Rock Springs Plaza, this is still some, some landscaping they got, has died and so they need to, to be replaced. They are in the, nearing the completion of a, of a third, third building. And so it'd be mine, I would like to at least look at this as, again, with them directly with their contractor and everything while they're out there landscaping for their new building that they could go ahead and fix what's, replace what has died in the existing. So we'll work with them on that one. We would want to keep the, the letter of credit for, to allow for that to happen. Amerton, section three, this one is getting close to built out. And we have had it for two years now. So we only want to recommend any, no more than a six-month extension there. So they can get that topping and everything cleaned up there. Villages of Green Tree, section two, phase one. This one is really the end of the maintenance period. So we would like to release this one. I'm sorry, the beginning of the maintenance period. Extend it, we would like to extend it one year as the maintenance bond, I'm sorry. Reduce it to ten thousand and extend it one year as the maintenance bond. If they can get these last few items cleaned up here. So we would recommend that really. And probably, we can go ahead and do that one actually because those are pretty minor issues. Just reduce that one to ten and extend it one year as the maintenance bond on that one. So that's all I got.
Got a question on the, is, looks like recommendation is reduced to fifty thousand. I just want to double check. Is that enough to cover the remaining open items?
Yeah, we looked at that. It's, because it was, because of the sewer alone was over four hundred thousand dollars of that bond. And then the road improvements were, were about two hundred and fifty, or two, three hundred and fifty thousand more. I mean, it was, plus when you add twenty percent onto that. Cause we always, we always calculate the bond amount and add twenty percent. So yeah, we're, we're, we're feel comfortable with that number.
Just want to double check. Thank you. Any other questions concerning the bond review report? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve the April bond review report. Do I have a second?
Second.
We got two or three.
Dealer's choice.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve the April bond review report. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor of approving signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Anything from staff?
Do I have anything else?
Counselor?
I think you make your.
Anything from the commission? Amy, again, welcome aboard. We stand adjourned.